December 5th with the regular Bucyrus City Council meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
McKiever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Potter.
Here.
Sherrick.
Here.
Spiegel.
Here.
Young.
Here.
You have before you the November 28th regular council meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKiever, a second by Mr. Spiegel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak. Mr. White has requested five minutes.
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. The First Amendment of the Constitution guarantees the freedom of speech, press, the right of the people to peacefully assemble, and the right to petition their government for a redress of grievances. The Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution guarantees due process. I have taken two oaths in my life, first serving in the United States military for over thirty and a half years, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign, domestic, and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same. Second oath that I took was as a Christian soldier for God and country, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same. The Constitution states, "We, the people." We are not the government, dictators, or tyrants. I'm not here to preach, I'm an educator. In the good book, we are not here to judge people. I am not judgmental toward anyone in this room. That is for a court of law is determined that. However, I've been judged by people in this very room for my constitutional rights and for what I said or did. May God have mercy on your soul. This proposed resolution, 230, 2023, for the water line on the County Road 330 East of 602 for eight property owners in Crawford County, not the city of Bucyrus residents. The spending of $154,600 for a water line going nowhere, dead in line. Even the person from the engineering firm stated that also. I looked up all these people within that project zone. There are basically three common factors that I've found so far. There could be more. One, not residents of the city of Bucyrus. Two, do not pay income tax. Three, political affiliation to the administration of this city. No city income tax, but you, City Council, wants to reward them with funds from our city funds. I asked Dan in a phone call a question. Is the city of Bucyrus water lines 100% intact? He stated, "No, they are not totally intact." So why are we giving away residents and taxpayers' money to out-of-towners? This money could and should be used to improve the water infrastructure within our city, for better drinking water for our citizens and visitors of this community. And Section 4 of this resolution declares an emergency measure in order to allow for the bidding process and projects to be completed in a timely manner. Same being deemed necessary for the preservation of the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the city of Bucyrus. This is a clear violation of this resolution. One, not residents of the city of Bucyrus. Two, making it an emergency so people cannot ask additional questions or concerns about this project through proper city procedures. You violated the due process of the Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution. What I believe to be true, that this is nothing more than but a political favoritism of taxpayers' money. So I encourage you to vote no on this resolution. Let the people have their due process of the law. This is not, I repeat, not an emergency. They have water source, and if they don't, federal and state funds could be used for this purpose, not fully funded by the taxpayers of the city of Bucyrus. In closing, sometimes people say and do things that are not right or legal. Dan, you're right. Oh, Dan, thank you for your discussion on this matter. You gave me more than I expected, but I will not discuss or repeat that with council tonight. I will use that information for a later date. We are all responsible and can be held accountable for our actions, either by our peers, residents, or by a court of law. It depends on how bad the circumstances. I heard in these chambers one time that no one is above the law. Thank you, Madam President, for the time and speaking tonight.
Anybody else?
Carolyn Shireman, 1065 East Mill Avenue. I was going to question Mr. Reeser, but he's not here, so maybe council can answer. I understand, and correct me if I am wrong, that you are in the, Mr. Reeser is in the process of a buyout for accrued sick leave over a 12-year period concerning Mr. Wagner and the amount of $30,000. One of my questions is, did Mr. Wagner have a policy or employment contract detailing sick leave with Roger Moore or Mayor Reeser? Also, Ohio law states an employer is not required to pay an employee any accrued sick leave upon separation from employment. So this leaves me with the following questions. The funds are being taken out of the general fund and out of three different enterprise funds. Could you please inform the citizens and council on what accounts you are taking the funds from and how much? And finally, why are you spending money to pay an employee that you are not required to and the city doesn't have? Thank you.
Anybody else?
Madam President?
Yes.
Can I either ask Mr. Gurratt for an answer to that, either now or during your report of her questions?
Oh, so I can answer now? Okay. So Mr. Wagner does have a contract. It would be under the Manpower Ordinance. When Mr. Wagner came in in 2012, there is the ordinance.
Can I need you to speak up?
I will try. When Mr. Wagner came into, when Mr. Wagner came into office in 2012, the Manpower Act from 2009, I believe, or 2010 was in place. Hold on. So every, so often, every three years or every year, we pass the Manpower Ordinance, right? And the Manpower Ordinance outlines salaries, benefits, sick time, vacation time, all of that for all of the non-union employees in the city of Bucyrus. So all of Mr. Wagner's rights and as far as employment rights would come from the Manpower Act. Now, if the Manpower Act is silent as to something, then you could use Ohio Revised Code to supplement that, which Ohio Revised Code also contains provisions that say upon separate, or you're accumulating four point whatever hours, 4.67 hours, I believe, per 80 hours worked. And upon separation, the employer pays a ratio of two to one. And so that would be as the sick leave. There's also the vacation leave, and there's also, in the Manpower Act, it talks about longevity pay. Those things are all in the Manpower Act, and from speaking with people around here that were here in 2012, and also talking to some labor lawyers, it appears that the contract doesn't differentiate Mr. Wagner from any other of the employees. It doesn't differentiate him from the chief of the fire department, the chief of the police department. I think historically, the service safety director may have been categorized in a different category and not entitled to sick leave, not entitled to those things based upon his classification as a salaried employee, but based upon the 2000, when he came in in 2012, and each subsequent Manpower Act, the only thing that he's not entitled to under this act would be his compensatory time, overtime. So he doesn't get any overtime for working more than 80 hours in a pay period. He doesn't get, you know, a day and a half for working overtime. He can't convert overtime into days off, those types of things. So this eliminates.
He's salary, though.
He is considered salary, but we don't make a differentiation in the Manpower Act that if you're salaried, you don't accumulate those benefits. The only differentiation that we have is if you are an elected official, you don't accumulate sick time, vacation time, those types of issues. And I get it, I understand what your point is. Okay, so he's salaried, we want to commonly think that you would accumulate those things. But the lawyers that I speak to in my research, it's not what we commonly think, or it's not what we commonly did, it's what does the Manpower Act, what does his contract, which is the Manpower Act, what does that say pertaining to his benefits? And that's where I'm stuck with what we have on paper with Mr. Wagner.
Is his Manpower contract open to the public?
Yeah, it's ordinance passed by council. Yeah, and so Ordinance 22-2023 is the most recent, Ordinance 25-2020, Ordinance 15-2017, there's one that I've been missing, but then Ordinance 17-2011. I mean, those are all, every so often, when we update the AFSCME contract, we then also update the Manpower Contract or the Manpower Ordinance for all of the non-union employees. And that's where you would find, you know, all of the employment information pertaining to all the employees that are not currently in the union.
What you're saying is under the Manpower Act, Reeser can pay him $30,000.
Well, it's not even Reeser, it's under the Man, right, under the Manpower Act.
The city would have to pay.
The city is obligated to pay him pursuant to the contract that we have with him.
Of all his accrued sick leave over 12 years.
If we had to litigate this issue, we would have substantial liability based upon the Manpower Act, yes.
So do you know what?
I don't know the exact number, what it would be.
Do you know what enterprises the money's coming out of?
So some of it would come out of the water fund.
Some of it's coming out of the general.
Some of it's coming out, like 25% comes out of the general fund, 25% comes out of the water fund, 25% comes out of the street fund, and 25% comes out of?
I believe it's sewage disposal.
Sewage disposal.
Stormwater.
Stormwater, yeah. Kelly would know the actual funds, but yeah, 25, his salary and every, all of his benefits are paid 25% out of each of those, the general fund, 25%, and then out of the three enterprise funds.
I have a question.
Ms. Sherrick.
Do we have a list of the days of sick leave and vacation he's used?
We do.
And that's all been subtracted from it?
Yeah, it has.
Is that record public?
Yeah. It is public, yeah. So the contract that he operates under, as of January 1st, 2017, anybody that had over, off the top of my head, 280 or 420 accrued unused sick leaves would be capped at that number. And at that point, Mr. Wagner was capped at 501.60 hours. And then every year after that, everybody, employees, get 119.60 hours, and then you would subtract how many hours he used throughout those periods, divide that by two because he gets paid two to one, and then multiply that by what his current rate of pay on those years would have been.
So when we're doing the new contracts with the fire and the police, and eventually asking the next council can address?
How to.
How to fund the service director and what?
And what benefits and what buyouts, yeah. I mean, it's all subject to negotiation, but currently we're stuck with what the current contract language is.
Is the same contract with fire chiefs and police teams?
Mr. Gurratt?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a record that is kept for each day that Mr. Wagner called off at work? So you can compare the days off compared to what he's asking for?
I think that there are bi-weekly time sheets. I believe that there are bi-weekly time sheets that would either have been submitted to payroll or were prepared by payroll based upon.
Yeah, but is that a record of him calling in and saying, "I won't be in today"? Is there a record of that, or y'all just taking his word?
There are lots of records.
Right, but yeah, I'm not sure exactly the record, but I think that, yeah, best case or best practice scenario would be have the mayor sign off on the service director's time sheet every two weeks.
Well, I'm not asking for a record request.
I know, but I'm saying.
I just want to know if there's anything that states his hours.
Right, and moving forward, the way that we would ensure that our people are adequately budgeting and using the correct, not taking a sick day when they're actually taking a vacation day because, or personal days, all of that good stuff, would be, I mean, in my office, everybody submits their time sheet to me, and I have to approve days off, I have to approve vacation days, sick days, all of that. So I think in the new Manpower Act, that should be a legitimate term, that the service director would submit that. I don't think that's too difficult.
So has he been asked to submit that?
Well, on the flip side, I'm also not his boss.
Pardon?
I'm also not his boss.
Right.
I mean, I guess Mayor Reeser would be authorized to say, "This is something that I need you to submit time sheets," and I don't think that Mr. Wagner would have an issue of it. I don't know that the auditor, I suppose that the auditor could say, "It's our policy, and we need these to ensure accurate records." But, I mean, I can implore them to do that for these types of situations, but at the end of the day, Mr. Wagner doesn't answer to me, and I don't sign his paycheck or his time sheet.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Wagner?
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. So we can pay the service safety director, but what about the funds that I brought up at last committee meeting, the over half million dollars that's owed to the buyouts, to the police and fires, they walk out the door, okay? Why wasn't that put in the budget? Because that's a potential, and as you guys told me at the last meeting, it was not put in the budget. That's a half million dollars that this new council is going to have to come up with if those people decide they're going to retire. So why wasn't that budget? But then we can, we can put in the budget, as Kelly said at the last meeting, for this water line, okay? All right? It was already approved in the fund, but we cannot budget for half million dollars in growing in money to the police and firefighters for their unused sick time? That's ridiculous.
Anybody else? So, Mr. White, the water fund is separate, it can't be used for that. So that's, I mean, that's a whole different fund, just so you know, I mean.
Seeing none, communications and petitions? Standing committee reports, plating? Public lands and buildings? Oh, nothing at this time, sorry. Home and safety?
Nothing to report.
Finance?
No report.
Economic development?
No report.
Service?
No report.
Traffic commission? Do you know anything? No?
No. Not for a long time.
Report of city officers. Mr. Reeser submitted his. It says regarding water line investments, water lines are a long-term investment and continue to pay back for decades after their installation. The investment in the 330 East project could be from $120,000 to $150,000. Recent bids have come in substantially lower than engineers estimate. We have eight homes interested in obtaining water, and it has been our experience that more residents eventually sign up because the cost of the new well, as well as softeners, is expensive. If eight families sign up for water and they pay $1,000 a year, this would be a 15-year payback, excuse me. If we use the lower estimate of the project, if we use a 3% inflation for the increase in the water sale, in the sale of water, then the estimate revenue for the year in 10 years is $1,350 per household. Even if this 50-year payback, and it is not, even if this is a 50-year payback, and it is not, then it is still a good investment because the 100-year revenue for these eight customers is $800,000, and this is without any future rate increases considered. All this revenue will be received with no more than $150,000 investment. Sounds like a darn good deal for the resident city of Bucyrus. Jeff Reeser. Safety service director has quite a copious report. Water line expansion update, the county commissioners approached the city about the water line expansion outside the city limits. The county's receiving state of Ohio money through the federal ARCA funds. Originally, Crawford County was covering 100% of the project, but with increased pricing of labor and materials, it went to 80% covered by the county, 20% covered by the city. It finally landed about 63% covered by the county, 37% covered by the city. Recent bids, however, have come in lower than the original engineer's estimate. Most of these projects are in close proximity to the Crawford County landfill, and the county commissioners want the water available to the county residents to tap in due to possible quality issues in the area. Stetser Road 602 project, engineer's estimate of $1,286,900. Actual bid came in at $737,138.95. County share was $675,520, which is the same under the actual bid. City share, $611,380, under where it said actual bid, our share was $142,563.32. The city's share was projected at 48% after bids came in. The city's share was 19.33% of the total project. The city saved approximately $400,000 from the original estimate. The county commissioners asked us to expand eastward to Route 30, on Route 30, on Route 330 East, to those residents who need safe drinking water since we received a lower bid than anticipated. Our total cost between the Stetser Road and 330 water line projects is estimated around $300,000. The Osceola Water Line Project is fully funded by the county commissioners, estimated at The Sulfur Springs-Locus Grove Water Line Project hopefully comes in lower than anticipated. The city's final cost of out-of-pocket, if Sulfur Springs-Locus Grove comes in at projected cost, the city's total investment for both projects would be estimated around $1 million. The city's projected overall investment in all water line projects estimated at $1,222,720. The savings will be estimated around $225,000. The city would never have had the funding to expand the water line outside the city without the help of the county commissioners. The county commissioners are investing $3,243,480 towards these projects. I just wanted to update you on some of the numbers and emphasize how important the cooperation between the city of Bucyrus and Crawford County commissioners has been in supplying fresh water outside the city limits. The city will be receiving revenue through the sale of water for decades to come, and this also positions us to expand water supply even further into the county. The sale of water outside the city limits is vital to keeping future rates as low as possible. Safety service director Wagner. Mr. Law Director.
So the three pieces of legislation pertaining to the police department and the chief of police, so the one about the officers, the lieutenants and the captains, the one about the dispatchers, another one about the police chief, because we do not have the final contract back from our lawyer and their lawyer, we would need to pull that as that's an exhibit on the, well, obviously it's important. You can't pass it without the contract. So we would pull that at this time. We should have it by the next meeting in December.
Ordinance 47, 48, and 49 are being pulled?
Yeah, yes, Madam President.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. Ms. Lewis?
You should have received the month-end reports for November, including the detailed trial balance. You may notice some inconsistencies in the new fund that was created for the fire attention bonuses. The state wanted it paid a different way than our software team initially instructed us, but the software team is currently fixing the problem. I would like to refer to finance committee as an emergency, a contract for the airport management services with Kevin DeTrey, to finance committee as an emergency appropriations to the general fund for fire department, to finance committee as an emergency transfers and reimbursements for fire department, to finance committee as an emergency appropriations to the safety forces civilian salaries, to finance committee as an emergency appropriations for general fund streetlights, and to finance committee as an emergency repealing Sections 3 and 4 of Ordinance 39-2023.
Can we do those all as one motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to refer to finance committee, the emergency contract for airport management services with Kevin DeTrey, the emergency appropriations to the general fund for fire department, the emergency transfers and reimbursements for fire department, the emergency appropriations to safety forces civilian salaries, the emergency appropriations for general fund streetlights, and the emergency repealing Sections 3 and 4 of Ordinance 3923.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. McKiever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And we don't have anything from either chief, so I may have a motion to accept city officers' reports as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Potter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak on standings or special committees and city officer reports. Seeing none, consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Proposed Ordinance 46-2023, appropriations to salary lines. Amending and supplementing Ordinance Number 66-2022, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2023, by appropriating from unappropriated general funds, the sum of $7,500 to the personal services line item within the service director category, and $350 to the personal services line item within the civil service category, and $425 to the personal services line item within the civil service clerk category, and $300 to the personal services line item within the code enforcement category, with all line items and categories being within the Program 7 General Government subparagraph. Further appropriating from unappropriated swimming pool funds, the sum of $1,800 to the personal services line item within the pool category within the swimming pool fund subparagraph. Further appropriating from unappropriated 2024 crime victims assistance funds, the sum of $9,000 to the personal services line item within the victims advocate category within the 2024 crime victims assistance subparagraph. Further appropriating from unappropriated 2024 Victims of Crime Act funds, the sum of $6,000 to the personal services line item within the victims advocate category within the 2024 Victims of Crime Act subparagraph. Further appropriating from unappropriated sewage disposal funds, the sum of $8,000 to the personal services line item within the sewage disposal category, and $3,000 to the personal services line item within the sewers and drains category, with all line items and categories being within the sewage disposal fund subparagraph. And finally, appropriating from unappropriated stormwater funds, the sum of $4,500 to the personal services line item within the stormwater utility category within the stormwater fund subparagraph. Declaring an emergency. Proposed Ordinance 50-2023, that is the 2024 budget, establishing an appropriations measure meeting the ordinary expenses of the city of Bucyrus, the state of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending the 31st of December 2024, and declaring an emergency. We have proposed Resolution 230-2023, that's the 330 East project, authorizing and directing the Bucyrus Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the city of Bucyrus, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts not to exceed $154,600 with the lowest and best bidder or bidders for the U.S. 330 East Water Line Project, and finally, authorizing and directing the Bucyrus City Auditor to draw a warrant or warrants in payment therefore and from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations, and declaring an emergency. Next, we have Resolution 231-2023, that's the WPCLF loan for the Morton &amp; Layer Design Loan. A resolution authorizing the service safety director to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the city of Bucyrus, Ohio, for planning and the design of the wastewater and designing a dedicated repayment source for the loan. and designing a dedicated repayment source for the loan. Proposed Resolution 232-2023, it's a TAP grant projects. Authorizing and directing the Bucyrus Public Safety Service Safety Director on behalf of the city of Bucyrus, Ohio, to advertise for bids and to enter into a contract or contracts not to exceed $292,600 with the lowest and best bidder or bidders for Stetser Road Phase 1, Partridge Road, and Nevada-Winford Road Waterline TAP Project. Finally, authorizing and directing the Bucyrus City Auditor to draw a warrant or warrants in payment therefore from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations and declaring an emergency. And finally, the final resolution is Proposed Resolution 233-2023. That's the Sulfur Springs/Locus Grove Project. Authorizing and directing the Bucyrus Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the city of Bucyrus, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts not to exceed $1,503,000, of which $818,220 will be paid for by the Crawford County Commissioners, $164,400 will be paid for through a water service grant, and $520,380 will be the city of Bucyrus's share with the lowest and best bidder or bidders for the Sulfur Springs and Locust Grove Waterline Project. Finally, authorizing and directing the Bucyrus City Auditor to draw a warrant or warrants in payment therefore from appropriate from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations and declaring an emergency.
I have a motion to accept. These are the first reading. I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for the general public to speak on legislation read for the first time.
Vicki DeShawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive. This is concerning appropriations ordinance number 46-2023. At the November 30th, 2023 Finance Committee meeting, Auditor Lewis stated that, quote, "We are in discussions with the Service Safety Director because under the manpower contract, he may be entitled to a buyout." She further stated that because time is short, she has included in the appropriations ordinance, which deals with other subparagraph line items, the subparagraph line items necessary to cover the possible buyout. I have the following comments and questions. The Service Safety Director is a salaried position. Does the Service Safety Director receive his full paycheck even when off sick and on vacation? I don't know if Mr. Gurnert wants to answer each question that I ask.
Yeah, so I will answer them as you go. He does, but he also then documents, if he took a vacation day, then he would document that out of the allotted 80 hours of vacation days that he would have gotten from 2013 to 2017, and 120 hours from 2018 to 2023. So he would allot those vacation days, and then he would also allot the sick days on his timesheets and track those.
The hourly city-paid employees are required to complete timesheets, setting forth hours worked, hours used for sickness, vacation, et cetera. Does the Service Safety Director's timesheets set forth this information?
As I was discussing with Carolyn or Mrs. Scheierman, I'm not sure exactly how his pay sheet is submitted. I know it's been explained to me that there is pay sheets on his behalf. I don't know if... It's my understanding that the mayor's not signing off on them, which probably would be a beneficial idea since the mayor's his immediate supervisor, but I don't know how those are submitted.
So we don't know if these sheets identify, "I was sick this day, I took vacation this day"?
They do. They do.
They do?
Yeah. The same one I filled out when I was working.
Okay.
Yeah.
In 2017, the city capped employee sick time. Was there a cap for the Service Safety Director? And if so, what was that capped amount? Which I believe you answered that question.
At that point, you were capped at 501.60, 501.60 hours.
Okay. Annually, on their anniversary date, city employees are paid two to one for any sick time over the cap. Have there been annual payments made to the Service Safety Director on his anniversary date?
No, and that's part of the reason that the amount is so high, because we were not paying him as it went.
But doesn't the manpower ordinance state that that's what's to be done?
That would have been the best scenario, but I believe there was some misunderstanding between the prior administration and the auditor's office as to whether Mr. Wagner would have been entitled to those sick leave payments, buyouts, or yearly buybacks.
Employees' paycheck stubs recite sick hours taken and balance remaining. Does the paycheck stub for the Service Safety Director recite this information as well?
I've no... I don't know. I've never seen his pay stub.
If his stub does not recite that information, what...
Yeah, so the theory behind the law would be, even if it doesn't, he should have been accumulating those, and the city was withholding a benefit that he was contractually obligated, or we were contractually obligated to provide. And that was what the lawyers that I've been talking to were saying, "Look, if you read your Manpower Act, there's no differentiation between the Service Safety Director." So even if historically, he didn't... There's not that, "On the stub, and we haven't done this," or I think you have to be there 10 years before you're even entitled to sick leave payouts. So some of the service directors never even came close to that amount. The whole argument, the whole lawsuit, would be over the Manpower Act and what's included therein. And because of our record-keeping or the city's record-keeping or our lack thereof, wouldn't necessarily erase our obligation under the act.
Okay. Let's see. If ordinance number 46-2023 is passed tonight by council as it's prepared and as an emergency, the appropriated monies will be immediately available for payout of a buyout. Do you agree with that?
I do agree with that, yeah.
Since council has a regularly scheduled meeting on December the 19th, why does the buyout matter need to be addressed tonight?
Yeah, I mean, you could kick it to December 19th, and council could consider it at that point as well. I mean, yeah, you're still before the first of the year.
Okay. It's been brought to my attention that the administration is meeting this week with outside legal counsel, and will, among other things, be discussing whether or not the Service Safety Director position is entitled to a buyout. Is this information correct?
I don't... I mean, they're meeting... We have mediation with the fire union, with Jonathan Downs, who does a lot of our labor law stuff, but I don't know that they're meeting to discuss Mr. Wagner's buyout.
Okay. So are you then the attorney who's going to be making or giving your legal opinion on whether a buyout is appropriate or not?
Yeah.
Okay. Since ordinance number 46-2023 contains appropriations that do not deal with the buyout matter, and if those appropriations need to be addressed tonight, I'm asking council to consider removing from the ordinance the various appropriations that do deal with the buyout and hold them until the above questions have been fully answered and the city has received a legal opinion on the buyout. Thank you.
Anybody else? Referring back to originating committee. Proposed ordinance 46-2023 is referred back to finance. Proposed ordinance 50-2023 is referred back to finance. Proposed Resolution 230-2023 is referred back to finance. Proposed Resolution 231-2023 is referred back to finance. Proposed Resolution 232-2023 is referred back to finance. And Proposed Resolution 233-2023 is referred back to finance. Committee report on pending legislation, finance.
Finance is favorable. Proposed ordinance 46-2023. Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 50-2023, the 2024 budget. We're also favorable to proposed Resolution 230-2023, the 330 East Waterline Project. Finance is favorable to proposed Resolution 231-2023, the WPCLF loan from Morton-Linleyer. Finance is favorable to proposed Resolution 232-2023, the TAP grant projects. And finance is favorable to proposed Resolution 233-2023, Sulfur Springs-Locus Grove Project.
Madam President.
Yes.
On proposed Resolution 230-2023, when I was preparing it, I think inadvertently I called it U.S. 330, but I think it's actually County Road 330 now. So I would have to amend... Sort of a Scribner's error. So that should accurately reflect CR 330 instead of U.S. 330.
Do we need to revise and get it reprinted? Or we might go as amended?
We can go as amended since it's just a typo.
Madam President.
Yes.
Madam President.
Yes.
On proposed ordinance 46-2023, the questions that have been brought up this evening, if we're looking at them as two separate things with the service directors stuff and then the rest, is there anything in here that does need to be passed tonight?
So the only thing that only deals with the service director would be the service director line for talking about the appropriations. The $7,500 on the personal services service director line, that's what we're discussing.
Yes.
Everything else, I mean, $720,000, the sewage disposal fund and the stormwater fund, both of those, the money's in there, but it's also... We were going to be short in those funds anyway. So it's covering that, but it's also covering what we would have been short in those areas, too.
So my question is, if we were to ask to move this to the next meeting, some of that needs to be addressed this evening?
It wouldn't have to. It could wait until... It would just... It would run the accounts into the negative, but then I could appropriate it at the time. So we could...
The point was made that we do have another meeting, and there's some more investigating that I think we owe that to the citizens to just make sure we've got all the information. So if I would like to request that be moved, would requesting to move the entire piece be acceptable to you? Or do we need to tear it apart and move certain pieces but not others?
We could... We could. We could move the entire piece.
Then I would like to make a motion to table ordinance 46-2023 until the following meeting once some further research can be done.
And I'll second that. So that is tabled until December 19th. I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Ms. Sherrick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Do we want to do a roll call?
I'll take the roll.
Let's do roll call.
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
No.
Young? All right, further consideration of pending legislation. We have ordinance 50-2023. For the second and third readings, the proposed ordinance 50-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare emergency?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers. McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 50-2023?
So moved. Second.
I'm sorry you seconded. I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers. McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
No.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Ordinance 50-2023 is duly adopted. Resolution number 230-2023. For the second and third readings, the proposed Resolution 230-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare emergency?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Spiegel, a second by Mr. McKeever. Spiegel?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 230-2023?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Spiegel. Young?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Resolution 230-2023 is duly adopted. Resolution 231-2023, for the second and third readings, the proposed Resolution 231-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare emergency?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers. McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 231-2023?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Spiegel. Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Resolution 231-2023 is duly adopted. Resolution 232-2023. For the second and third readings, the proposed Resolution 232-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers. McKeever?[1627.86]
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt Proposed Resolution 220, I'm sorry, 232-2023?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Potter. Sherrick?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Resolution 232-2023 is duly adopted. Resolution 233-2023, for the second and third readings, the Proposed Resolution 233-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Spiegel. McKeever?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt Proposed Resolution 233-2023?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. McKeever. Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Resolution 233-2023 is duly adopted. Do we have any old or unfinished business? Is there any new or miscellaneous business? Thursday's the Santa Parade in Canada Lake Christmas downtown, and hopefully, everybody gets down there and...
Can I say something for you and this ladies business?
Yeah.
Vicki Deschawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive. Have not had an opportunity to talk yet with Erin and Kevin, but we are looking to have the swearing-in ceremony for the new elected officials on Tuesday, December the 19th, which is a regular council meeting, and looking to do that at 6:00 PM prior to the 7:00 council meeting.
Did you make those arrangements?
Um...
You did?
Bruce.
Okay. And did Judge already have his calendar?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
I did not know about this.
Right, because we just finalized yet this evening, and that's why I thought, okay...
Perfect. So, you said it's the 19th at 6:00 PM?
Yeah, December the 19th at 6:00 here in council chambers. And Judge Pat Murphy will be doing the swearing-in. And I guess Kaylee.
Okay.
Sorry.
And Mr. Gerner.